Let's. Her voice is so loud. She making sure we're awake, I guess. Okay, we'll just start as we try to with our land acknowledgement, which is on our agenda, but I'll read it. We respectfully, I can't speak. We respectfully acknowledge the traditional ancestral unceded territory of the Abenekki people who have stewarded this land throughout generations. And I will just review our agenda for additions or changes. I was thinking if this time at the end, I just, I spent yesterday with every agency and government entity or whatever in Vermont and I, if I can remember it, I had a couple of thoughts that I was gonna share from that, but if I can't remember them, it will be a moot point. So I'm gonna actually move to the other side of the tape so I can see the screen better. Just makes it easier for me to see people's reactions. Alright, so first order of business is our NRCS update. Olivia, are you ready?
Yes, I am. Um, thank you for having me. Flixia sends her regards. She had a family emergency, so she had, she was not able to attend the meeting. Uh, she did look into some of the items that Corey had requested, so I will give an update on those. So, um, first thing, we're still working through obligations, so there is two more contracts that are going to be contracted um, in Wyndham County. Um, so what we were gonna do is give an NRCS update of just, you know, the applications and obligated amounts for Wyndham County, the next board meeting. Um, so that was gonna be what we were gonna present at that meeting. So, and then Heather will be getting a mobile tool device. It won't be a cellphone. Uh, Flixia said more details to come, so I think that they were looking for like iPads or something like that, so it might be in a different format. Uh, mobile tools is basically just so that you can go out into the field, record information of, you know, where practices are gonna be planned so that it's easier for us to track and also to um, work in the planning process and also to help with contracting later on. She did say that there is background checks being processed for the new hire. And then the new hires, one will be getting a computer. Um, so that's kind of just the updates on that. Uh, we do have the locally led rollout meeting that is going to be September twenty seventh. Hopefully y'all are either gonna attend that virtually or in person in Randolph. Did everyone kinda get that sent out?
Ploys?
Yeah, yeah. You don't, yeah, there'd be no reason for supervisors, I don't think.
I can look into that and then get back to you, but I think.
I, I'm not looking for any meetings to go to, I was just.
Cause it's a, it's a training, right?
Yeah, it's a training like just for, you know, rolling out locally led and how it's important and, you know, the processes. It is going to be recorded as well, so we can also send you the link and kinda do a follow up with that as well. Just, I know we are all tired of trainings for this year. It's, you know, we're almost at the new fiscal year. Um, and then, let me just make sure. We are going to be having our staff meeting tomorrow and that is going to be taking place near Bromley. And we're kinda just gonna be looking at some chemical treatments, some mechanical removal, timber stand improvements. Um, so again, I think that that was sent out to all the district managers, so again, feel free to come and learn as a group. Um, it's always like a fun time to get out into the field. And I do have a short bio of our new um, soil conservationist in the Rutland Field Office. I was gonna just send that out and I'll post it um, below, just to, as a opening to the new planner. Um, not that it's in Wyndham, but you know, she might come down for trainings or whatnot, and so it's nice to get to know new faces. And then the last thing is we will be having ProTrax, our um, system for doing payments. Shut down for processing. Um, usually that shut that shuts down October first and it'll be down for like roughly two weeks, so then we can get back and rolling with payments, so. That's why it's just important for us to get contracted, so those are our big ticket items.
Um, just, I know my son was talking last night about the continuing resolution. Is there any scuttlebutt about that? I didn't hear anything yesterday. Didn't come into any conversations. I had kinda forgotten about.
Yeah, thank you for bringing that up. I was wondering that too.
We haven't had any dis- further discussions about the continuing resolutions. Um, you know, the last time that that did come up, we were able to still have funding to have us be paid for um, to do the services. I know that, I think the Farm Service Agency was like on a different type of, you know, continuing resolution and I can't speak for them, but I haven't heard anything coming down the pipe. Um, I'm sure once we get closer to uh, having a new person coming into office, that might be a different story, but a- as of right now, that's not what is under discussion.
Okay, I just, yeah.
The government runs out of money next Friday. Well, next Sunday technically.
Right.
And it looks different from what I, I mean, it looks different every single time there is a shutdown as to what's deemed essential and what's not, right? The last one almost happened, we had been told we were gonna be kicked out.
We had meetings on that and we have yet to hear from people like saying, hey, you have to join this meeting to learn how.
Right. I get the impression it's because there's a little bit of fatigue, cause we've done it so many times.
Well, and usually Jill Arachi with VACD is on top of it and sends something out, so I would hope maybe it's no shutdowns happening, we can hope.
I, I will follow up with Flixia and I'll have that as like something to update the group about. Cause I'm sure all the districts and other um, partners that we work with would wanna know as well, cause it, it would affect everyone.
Yep. Okay, um, any other questions for Olivia? Or any other thought you have, Olivia? Is settling in, settling into your position?
I am, it's, it's a lot. It's a, a learning curve, but you know, working with Heather and I get to talk with Corey, so it's like nice to start to get to, you know, meet everyone. I really like coming to your district meeting. I noticed that like you guys are just like a tight knit group, so that was really great to see. Um, and it's refreshing too, like.
Thank you. Thank you.
It's a good team, you know, like not everyone has that and it was just like how you guys interact. It's just nice to see that.
Well, some of us have had a lot of experience with it.
It's taken us years of practice.
Meg's still working on it after twenty or whatever. So I, I just had the thought, um, if you're all set, Olivia, you know, we, did you do introductions before I got here?
I mean, the people in this room have met each other, but.
Okay, well, I haven't, I'm sorry, I don't even remember your name.
Oh, uh, Garrett, Garrett Manchester.
Okay, um, so maybe we can just do some quick introductions of people on screen and um, so that we're sure that Garrett knows everybody and gets to know the faces. So I'm Linda Corse, Chair of this well put together whatever Olivia just said. Uh, Conservation District here in Wyndham County. Uh, my husband, daughter and I have an organic dairy farm out in Whitingham. Then, um, my husband's been on the farm since, no, he hasn't. His family has been since eighteen sixty eight. I've been involved with districts about fourteen years and I am this board's representative to the State Association of Conservation Districts and then from there, I'm the Vermont Rep to the National Association of Conservation Districts. Um, I believe I'm also the, and you'll maybe get familiar with some of these terms, maybe you won't, but the Supervisor Union Rep to the State Agency, the Natural Resource Conservation Council. So, that's, yeah.
And President of VACD.
Oh, right, President of VACD, now just our rep to it, yeah. I told someone yesterday when they said, how did you get involved? I said, I couldn't say, don't know how to say no. But that's not all there is to it. It's a great, I have always thought districts are a really cool entity. Especially after having some involvement with, no offense, but federal agencies, they're a bit more complex in how they can work or how they have to work and stuff, so the districts have a little more flexibility. And welcome. So if you wanna let us hear a little bit about yourself, anyone that hasn't at least already.
Yeah, um, I guess so for everyone who I haven't uh, met or introduced myself to yet. Um, Garrett Manchester, I'm with the uh, VHCB in AmeriCorps, um, serving here in the Wyndham County Natural Resource Conservation District. Um, I'm originally from Platteford, New York, so upstate, um, right in the corner between Kenan, Vermont, part of New York. Um, and I've lived my life in that around like park, so um, I felt a lot of familiarity with this area, this type of um, rural and also um, it's a really great forested area and um, you know, the river and I'm, I'm a big fan of wetlands, especially with uh, birding. So feel right at home and I'm.
I met him at the birding on the farm, so.
Let's see, Peter, have you introduced yourself to Garrett? Do you know?
Yeah, just on the Zoom screen this morning, we had a CISM meeting. I'm the uh, Forest Program Director. I don't think Olivia and I have met yet. I'm the Forest Program Director for the Vermont Land Trust. I work in the Brattleboro office.
Uh, let's see, Olivia, just.
Peter, we actually got to do a project in Brettlin. You came up to.
Oh, that's right, that's right.
There into the woods together.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Love working with you.
Thanks for reminding me.
Yeah, I mean, I wanna do more work like that, cause I feel like it's fun and like to get the, the specialty from our, you know, great resources and partners um, to utilize that more when we're looking at specific sites. My name is, nice to meet you, Garrett. Is it Garrett or Garrick?
Uh, Garrett.
Okay, nice to meet you. My name is Olivia Carlson and I am the Acting District Conservationist for the South Zone right now. Uh, Flixia Moore was the manager and now she's taken assistance to field operations. So I'm kind of learning the ropes in the transition. Nice to meet you.
Well.
And, I mean, yeah.
Well, I had not met Olivia before either.
Oh, okay.
So, hi Olivia, um, I'm Meg Kluga. I'm also on the district, have been for a very long time. And um, I have a very small horse operation in West Brattleboro. And yeah, twenty years, twenty or so years on the district.
Awesome. Nice to meet you, Meg. I love horses too, so.
She's gonna fit right in. We don't have to worry.
And Heather, have you met everyone? Okay.
Sure have.
I think that's everyone. Okay. Well, it's kind of nice having you here working with us and. Welcome. Um, so next we jump to the fascinating financial reports.
I tried to make.
The impressive financial reports. I was trying to show my granddaughter this. I was trying to look at this last night when I was at my son's house and I was trying to show her this and say, look, it looks kinda like the Eiffel Tower or something. So the Empire, yes, Empire State Building, I guess.
I left out the general ledger, which shit trimmed what, a hundred and thirty seven pages or something like that? I did email that to all of you and in case anyone just can't sleep tonight. Okay, so this is just overview of lots and lots of stuff. There's still a little bit of work to do to finish our reporting to NRCC. There's mostly um, a need to do like journal entries to kinda get stuff into the right pots a little bit. Um, but I think in terms of being able to look at the top level, it's, it's everything's where it should be, so. Um, this first graphic is just a quick breakdown of our income by funder for the past fiscal year. So fiscal year is July one, twenty twenty three to June thirty, twenty twenty four. Um, so you can see, um, as has been the case in the past, NRCC is our largest funder. That's the Natural Resources Conservation Council. Um, and that's a lot of state grants that flow through that agency. And then our second largest source of revenue right now is our sales program, um, which is remarkable how big that's gotten. Um, and then down from there are municipals, uh, which includes mostly towns that contribute to the greeter programs and the Wyndham Regional Commission, which contributed some funding to that by parent outreach and ad work that Isabel was doing this year. That, we still have that funding, but it's moved over now, now it's with the Vermont Community Foundation. Um, and um, National Fish and Wildlife Foundation, that's our Long Island Futures Fund Project. Um, and on down from there, um, we got some money from NACD and VACD. NACD is new this year. Um, the other Conservation District line was funding from the Franklin NRCD for Soil Health Training for Isabel and Heather, which is a really nice um, thing, the opportunity that was available to staff this year. Um, and then I did do a little, little breakdown of our income by area of work. So you can see currently, um, Natural Resources Conservation and Restoration is our largest pot of funding. So that's firm removals and projects like that, um, generally speaking. And then down from there agriculture, so outreach and education to producers, technical assistance and conservation planning. Um, soil sampling fits into that bucket. Um, then down from there education and the two smallest are uh, administration and then made a little bit of funding for stormwater remediation, um, things like rain gardens and infiltration steps. Um, and then I tried to break it down a little bit more specifically, not by like area of work, but like type of activity. So, um, you can see the sales program is the single largest basically pot of money. Um, and then next from there is outreach, education and technical assistance to producers. Um, down from there is screeder program and water chestnut survey and removal. Down from there is core services. So core services is our one grant that we do get from the state to basically pay us to be a district. Some deliverables are reports like this and holding regular meetings, following open meeting law. Holding elections, which by the way, will be due to, do, to do fairly soon, usually November. Um, so it'll be on the future business soon. Um, and you can kinda go down from there. Um, we have a pretty good distribution of funding across like different types of work, which is good. Um, and I think it helps keep us sane that we're not doing the same thing all day.
I like that little barely there line for the string table. I was gonna say, when, it seems though, when it's used, it's very appreciated and.
Oh, yeah.
Very enlightening to people.
Um, I will say that, so the string table, we have some funding through our Tactical Basin Planning Award to take the string table places like on Sunday, Isabel and Garrett will be taking it to the Mount Snow Wildlife Festival. Um, in Dover, that's funded through basin planning, uh, so was the, the CRC River Fest that others and Jeff did and the Harris Cove Wildlife Festival. Um, in the past, we've done the Guilford Fair. Um, so those things go on basin planning because they were a deliverable for that grant. So we use the string table more than that little tiny bar shows. Those are just the times that someone actually paid us for the string table. Um, okay, and then a breakdown of staff time by task. Um, now this does include the greeters and there are significant contribution of staff time. So you can see the largest, single largest bar are the greeter programs. Um, we invest a lot of staff time, more penis greeters. Um, and a little bit of me managing them. And then um, our second largest pot is outreach, education and technical assistance to producers. Next is conservation planning, um, which is something that's pretty much new to us in the last year and a half or so. Um, next largest is invasive species. Um, that includes the water chestnut survey and removal. It also includes the Japanese steel grass and the watershed grant, the west stone mapping project. Um, down from there basin planning and then some interesting ones, unfunded meetings and events. Um, we put that under our core services, cause we have to pay for it somehow, but I, this year I did break out core services, so you could sort of see what we did with all of that money. Um, so that's one of the, when we're making the case to the legislature as to why they should fund us, I think being able to say like, so many of those things we go to that are valuable, you know, we don't have a grant to pay for. So, um, sales programs just below that, um, at around four percent of staff time. Administration, um, these board meetings, planning them and putting them on. My work as district manager representative, staff professional development. Um, that's another one that's a little bit misleading, because some of the PD is paid for by either basin planning or egg seaweed, which is egg. That's our grant to do outreach and education to egg producers, but the state provides robust funding to us for staff to go to training. So that, a little bit of that is, it is hidden in another bar, basically. And I'm down from there.
Um, when talking about financials, Corey, never say something is hidden.
Sure, I'm trying to be really transparent about the graphics. No money's hidden. Uh, and then lastly, here's our look at our five year district budget growth. So you can see we had another pretty substantial jump of, um, to be about seventy or eighty thousand dollars from last year to this year. And we'll have another fairly similar bump next year, I would guess at this point. And then here's our budget to actual, broken down of all four quarters. So the first column that says the amount was what we had actually budgeted. This was last revised in December. And then this is where we landed. So the biggest discrepancies, um, off the top of my head, I can just tell you are the Long Island Futures Fund Project. Now, so that says National Fish and Wildlife Foundation. We budgeted on a hundred and thirty nine thousand, five hundred and thirty two dollars and instead we only took in twenty five thousand, five hundred and thirty six. So it's a pretty substantial deviation, um, and.
Is that money still to come?
It can be. We have a, our grant award has not been altered. Um, so if you go under contractual, other contractual is where all those partners that we were gonna sub grant to, to do various components of that project. But we had planned on seventy two thousand and change. We've only allocated twenty four thousand so far, so that's, that's where that comes out in the wash. Um, basically, we ran into a couple of things. Uh, some partners not wanting to participate in the project. Um, other partners happy to participate, but don't have the capacity. I mean, we had something like twenty five thousand per district in the proposal that we were prepared to give to all of these partners to do this work. And none of the partners have staffing capacity, like even if they have, where, we say, here's, here's how much money you can spend and they're like, yeah, we don't, there's not enough hours in the day. So, um, we don't have a great solution yet. Um, in my report, there's a little bit of details, but we have steering committee meeting Monday for that project. And talked about, you know, hey, we've got all this money. Do we need to tweak how we approach this project? Do we need to hire more staff and just do it internally if partners don't have the capacity? So, um, I'll be reaching out to National Fish and Wildlife Foundation to chat with them about kind of how much flexibility is there in, compared to what we proposed that we would do. As we've learned more, as steering committees provide all this insight, we think we wanna do a little bit different scope of work. So we need to find out if our funders will allow us to do a different scope of work. And then if so, if we can amend our budget and possibly our timeline too. My hope would be that we can stretch this a whole another year. Which would help us to have a little more like stable predictable funding, cause there's gonna be a big peak in flesh otherwise on that grant. Um, so that's the really big one that jumps out to me. Uh, Dummerston, um, implementation. That's only because they were a little bit behind schedule and a lot of it uh, ended up falling after July one. And so it's been spent. Um, it's just, it was spent a little bit later than we thought. Um, same thing with the Jacksonville burn. Um, the engineers that we're working with on that are completely overwhelmed. Um, the flooding this summer and other parts of the state has really pulled them away. So they're scrambling to meet the deadline on that project, just coming up, but we do anticipate finding all of that. Um, AFT RCPP, that's conservation planning that Heather does. You can see we came out about ten thousand under what we had predicted. Um, I don't know Heather, if you're available to talk yet, if you have any thoughts about, you know, it's, it's a lack of farms wanting to engage in that program or a lack of farms. Um, when contracts are like ranked and assigned to funding pools. We've had producers that applied and thought they were gonna be in the AFT pot. Um, and.
Wait, I'm here, sorry. Um, no, I think one of the, well, um, a few things. I wasn't fully trained up before, um, so it was hard for me to like take on any of the contracts. Um, I've now gone through a year of, of shadowing Emma and having her assistance. Um, I, I think the ma- the biggest thing is just we only had one contract assigned to AFT RCPP. Um, so while they were a, uh, challenging contract and probably took more time than average. Um, it's still like, I can only do, I, I have two other funding pools to pull from, for money from when I do outreach to farms. And I do, like if they have livestock, then I just automatically put it into AFT funding, um, to cover those hours. Um, but yeah, I'm hoping like the past month or so, the majority of my time has been spent on AFT. Um, hopefully that'll turn around this coming year.
Um, so the, the good news is the amount of funding that American Foreland Trust basically committed to us, which was two hundred thousand over four years. They're still standing behind out of money. Um, and with us hiring a new person, hopefully, right now. Um, our capacity to use that money is gonna go up as we have more people working on planning work, so. Um, I, I'm hopeful that we'll spend down most of, all of that. Um, so those were the major deviations in terms of income. Are there any other questions about income before I move on to expenses? Um, we finished with three hundred and sixty two thousand, four hundred and seventy one dollars and ninety one cents of income. Um, and we had planned on five hundred and twenty six thousand, so, um, still coming in quite a ways under what we initially thought we would do.
Do you include categories? Like, is some, is this, some of this auto populated, like the utilities, rent, scholarships, like?
Under expenses?
Yeah.
Um, so the categories that you see under expenses are um, the classes that NRCC uses. So that when we do our reporting to NRCC.
It's easier.
We don't do, like, we don't pay rec.
I just, when I saw donations and scholarships, I was like, oh.
Yeah, and that's, that's a thing as our finances get better, we could definitely think about. Um, so under expenses, uh, we had three hundred and fifty eight thousand, five hundred and fifty one dollars and ten cents in expenses for a net positive three thousand, nine hundred and twenty dollars and eighty one cents. Um, and we had hoped to have a net positive of forty one thousand, seven hundred and forty one dollars and fifty six cents. So that's the bulk of the discrepancy right now is, you know, we're meat, we're paying our bills, we're staying on track, but we're not saving up a bunch of money. And it's debatable if we're supposed to save money as a municipality that's living on taxpayer money, but um, we had hoped to build a little bit more of a reserve.
Um, that's a point to keep in mind with the statute discussion or whatever. When we try to figure out just what we are and.
Yeah.
How we're supposed to be functioning and what we're supposed to be doing.
Yeah, I know of one district that split three hundred thousand in the bank in the last couple of years. Which is amazing to me and I'm jealous and also I don't know that you're supposed to do that with taxpayer money. That was allocated for specific things, like it's deliverable based funding.
Well, yeah, I mean, if it's, if it's money that they got to do something and they didn't do that something, that would maybe be a little questionable. Um, but I would think their funder would be talking to them about that.
There's a general lack of broad oversight right now.
Well, yeah, I mean, um, it, yeah, let's not get into that discussion right now, but. Um, you know, I think, you know, towns and stuff have reserve funds, right? And, and things that they can stock money up for or and I think historically districts that have maybe had their billable rate accurate and stuff and you know, some grants allow a certain amount of, you know, but cost that is supposed to be for district funding and, and that you can save up for a rainy day. Is the hope at least to some extent, so that we can at least cash flow, you know, like when you have something happen that you've got uh, some amount, I think is at least what, there's hope that by having more stable funding, that districts could build up at least some reserve, whether they're thinking hunt three hundred thousand or not. I mean, again, might depend on the district and how much their cash flow needs. You know, somebody's got twelve staff members, then that's gonna be a different thing than somebody that's got a twenty hour a week district manager. Those are the kinds of variations we have in our districts that make. Having continuity or whatever the word is that I'm struggling to find, makes it difficult to have that, but.
Um, and so I guess just to, um, because. um, because we didn't have sub-grantees or subcontractors bill for as much as we'd expected on both the Long Island Futures Fund project and like the Dummerston project falling across the fiscal year, we charge indirect on those types of grant awards. And that's where we'd hoped to make up kind of a lot of that extra is by we're charging indirect. To cover our administrative costs. And so we came in under there big time. Um, those were the main discrepancies I saw. But certainly happy to answer any questions anyone has about all of these numbers.
Any questions for Cory on these financials? Or thoughts? I will just say it's, yeah, uh, you, your reporting is great. I mean, we've had times, remember, we used to have these like spreadsheets that you kind of inherited from
Yeah.
former district managers or whatever, we'd be like trying to see it and understand it. So this is nice to have this. I mean, I know there's a lot more detail available to us with the general ledger and you make that all available to us in public or whatever, but um, having this kind of summary presentation is very helpful. To me at least.
The profit and loss by classes in here, um, I'm not going to go line by line during the meeting today, but it was in your board packets. The board packet is on the website too.
Um, Peter, did you have something that?
No, all I was gonna say is that Cory covered all the things that I was, I had questions about. So thank you for that thorough report.
Very good. Um, but yeah, you can go through the P and L if you want to see like kind of the grants that we you know, do well on or don't do on. The thing that hasn't been done, when I was saying there's still a little bit of work to do, there are some things that are currently under core services. I stuck them there so it would be easy to track them. Um. Things like our cash and loo that's based there on healthcare plan for employees. That needs to be distributed out across all of the classes because all the funders pay for that, not just one funder.
Right.
Um, that's a huge job and I don't quite have the expertise to do it right yet. Last year I went down the rabbit hole and spent hundreds of hours trying to do it.
Yeah.
And realized that there was, I could never make it balance out the way that I thought I should and did meet with Lena and found out that like, oh yeah, there's a whole different way to do accounting. You really need to do that. So we do have funding in this Watersheds United Vermont Workforce Capacity Development Grant to hire somebody to basically come in and help us kind of set up our books in a more correct way for like a better word.
Mm-hmm, yeah, great. Yeah, you probably know Claire is back.
She is. I got the email yesterday and I was so excited.
Yeah, I saw her yesterday.
Nice.
Um.
I was on a meeting today.
I can't remember. There was something that I suggested or talked about that maybe she might want to help with her address. I don't even remember what it was, but I was like, but I'm sure you're swamped right now and I can't even remember how many emails she said she had in her inbox. She was trying to catch up with.
Um, and then the balance sheet just shows, we did finish the year with seventy-seven thousand, six hundred and ninety-three dollars and forty-eight cents in total assets. Um. So we talk about having some like wiggle room, but that's where we started to get a little bit of a buffer there that makes it so that when we hit a low point in those peaks and valleys, that low point's not so close to zero that I don't sleep.
Yep.
Um, I think that's everything. Yeah. Any questions about any of that?
I don't think so. And to be candid, if I don't look at this stuff ahead of time, I have trouble doing it quick.
Sure. Well, and so feel free to reach out later.
I, yeah. And usually I try to have gone through them ahead of time and this time did not.
Any questions from the screen? Peter, Heather? Olivia? Okay, let's see. So thank you for that, Cory. Um, next we have our updates on Ag Resource Specialist Hiring Process. Um. Does that need a executive session?
I didn't know how that worked. It needs a vote, but I didn't know if we needed to go into executive session to talk about the, the candidate. Or if
That would be up to the board's um discretion or needs. Um. Peter, Meg, any thoughts whether we
If all we have to do is vote on the candidate, I don't feel the need to have a
No, the vote has to be in public session. I wasn't sure if either any of us.
I'm not feeling the need to debate it. I think she's great. I think we're lucky to get her, so.
Okay.
Ditto.
All right. Well, then why don't we move right along to um entertain a motion to um approve hiring May.
Maylin.
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 Bring it to title.
M A E L E N N.
Uh, so moved.
Um.
Last name.
As our Ag Resource Specialist, yep.
I think mass and M A S.
Any further discussion that can be held in open session? If not, all those in favor, say aye.
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 Anyone opposed? Not me.
She is coming in Monday to fill out paperwork, so.
Great.
I'm moving great. And she secured housing, so.
Oh, she has.
Good for her.
Good. Great. I was trying to think, but I don't get out and about in the housing world much. Okay, annual meeting planning.
It looks like we have everything except the keynote.
Yeah, the biggest piece that we're still missing is, is a keynote speaker. Um. Heather, do you mind going over that list of options that we kind of were still kicking around? And I think we were looking for more input from the board as to of these options, which one do we feel strongest about?
Yeah, um, I had a couple. They were like professors a bit far away. Um, it might be hard, especially now I think we've looked at the schedule and it we might only want them to chat for like a half an hour. So that might be hard to get someone from like New York or Connecticut or something like that. Um. Uh. Emma Keister recommended a couple of people to us. Um, I think all, I think two are professors at Dartmouth. Both are people that she works with. I think all three are actually ones that she's met um and then become like, I think created a social relationship with them. Um. And yeah, I think I just, I, I think we just need a direction in what you guys want to go with.
Well, these professors that you're talking about, what is their field or interest area?
All conservation. I'm trying to find the list that I written down. Um. One is a farmer. He runs magnetic field, or they run magnetic field farms. Um.
They run what?
Magnetic field farm in Athens?
Athens, yep. Um, I'm not exactly sure what they teach. Um. Another one is, is a forest. They, they have a lot of forested land and, and I think they're doing innovative work um with that land. Um. And I forget the third. Why she thought the third one would be interesting. Um.
And then there were a couple of other names that were kicked around over email and have been talked about. One is your daughter.
Yeah, she said, I have no clue what I would speak about. So
I find that hard to believe.
I'm, I'm actually going to say no on her behalf or her.
And I assumed that.
This year she might
Okay.
It might be something at some point, but she's she's not in the right place right now to do that.
Uh, the other one was Vern Grubinger with U V M Extension.
We saw him yesterday too.
Did you? We've had him at workshops before. He's a great speaker, but.
Yep. After I had, I hadn't seen him to speak with and we didn't get to speak much. Um, but um, I would think he could be interesting and but I don't know the rest of the board.
Well, I, I heard him speak a long time ago and I thought he was excellent. Um, my only question is whether he's done enough things locally that people would say, oh yeah, Vern's great, but.
I get to see him.
And I don't, I just, I don't know. Yeah, I don't have a real sense of that. Other than that, I think he'd be fine. Um. If one of the Dartmouthy people has you know, an interesting topic or it's not so much where they're from, it's what they're going to talk about.
Well, that's so every, everyone I talk to asks what we want them to talk about. So I say conservation. Um.
Yeah. I think if they're familiar with the work of conservation districts and they can talk about something that directly interacts with that, you know what I mean?
Yeah. Right. I mean, like the forested one, for instance, if whatever they're doing for innovative practices is nothing that anyone involved with the districts could ever hope to do, then that might not be so interesting, but um, we as everyone keeps saying, there's a lot of forested land in Wyndham and it doesn't always get covered um with programs and stuff, maybe the way we'd like it to. So you know, maybe they have something that could stimulate us applying for a grant we haven't thought to apply for or
And one thing is there are awful lot of people who are not our typical uh farm community who have forested land and might be interested in some if someone comes in with something interesting, um, which puts you kind of back on the hook, Heather, cause you know, I have no idea what these people would be excited about talking about.
Yeah, um, I don't know either. Um, I think, and it might also just come down to like availability, although I know it feels far away, but it's not.
It lasts in two months.
So I would suggest maybe, and again, I'm not putting anything down on the farm or whatever from magnet, magnetic field farm, but without having some idea what they farm or what his interest level or field might be. Just off the top of my head, I'd say, let's try maybe either the forested Dartmouth professor or the or the forest land Dartmouth professor or Vern Grubinger. That would be my thought. Peter, any thoughts?
I guess my leaning was towards Vern. Um, I haven't heard him speak in a while, but the fact that he is local, I think is kind of interesting. Um. Yeah, unless we had somebody who we felt was really dynamic that we knew was going to do a great job.
Yeah, I can go touch Vern. I think that's
Yeah.
That'll be easy.
Why don't we try him and then?
Yeah, he's got name recognition. People, I, everything I hear people say, oh yes, in a positive way when I, so.
Yeah, I would like that Vern knows who we are and what we do.
Yeah.
You know what I mean? Like it'd be, that'd be the idea, bringing an outside speaker who maybe isn't familiar with us at all or with districts. Hey, this event's about the district, so.
Right.
Well, I'll be, yep, I'll, I'll chat with Vern and try to get him. I'll be right back. Um, otherwise everything, I think Cory, you're up to date on everything. Um, we've signed the contract. Um, and they have no other, oh, and musician, but you know.
Um, yeah, the deposit's been paid for the facility, for Scott Fireman, for the porch, for the catering. Um, we have a musician lined up that Emma Greg, um, the other Emma of N R C S knew personally and, and um, I appreciate what I reached out to them and said, like, what would your fee be? They said, oh, we wouldn't feel comfortable charging more than a hundred for all the great work your organization does. So it's very nice.
They're higher.
Exactly.
I had the thought driving here, we could ask Felixia to sing.
Does she sing?
I believe I've heard her sing, but I've all, it comes up now. It comes up now and then.
Nice.
She sings quite well.
Um, and then we were hoping
Might be a ways for her to come.
Yeah, we're gonna, we're hoping to um gather baked goods from basically staff and board so that we could have some desserts if folks are willing to do that.
As long as it's not any time in the next week.
You think it's gonna get better?
Well, my, I'm president of the Ladies Benevolance Society. We've had two fellowships come up that I have, I have, like, I have to make two dozen or two loaves of tuna salad sandwiches for tomorrow that I have to do when I get home tonight. They're getting picked, they're getting picked up while I'm at farm milking or whatever I do in the mornings and catchers.
Can you sound?
Um, somebody's listening. No, anyone can listen. It's an open meeting.
But yeah.
Um, but yeah, but I certainly can.
Wow. Apparently that's sound when I get an email on here.
But yeah, I mean, that's what we did last time. I believe that seemed to work out okay.
Yeah.
Um, the
There's some good bakers.
The registration page is up on the website. Um, I did just find out, which I did, I'm glad someone told me this. The way it was set up, you had to pay something. You couldn't register for free. Um, and I reached out to streamline our website hoster and they were like, well, yeah, because it's set up as a form that like as a transaction, that's the model. So they were like, the credit card processor is charging you fifty cents a transaction and you have to cover that fifty cents. There's not some way around that. So I added language that said, if you, you know, if paying is a hardship and you, or it's inconvenient, like whatever, just email us to sign up so that we because I don't want folks to be turned away. And it says in bold, like our, our goal is to make sure no one is turned away from this opportunity.
Right.
So we'll see. Um, we only, I think we have three people registered right now, so it's time to crank up the P R.
Okay. What's happening with silent auction?
Nothing yet. It's on my list. Need to make some, some phone calls and some call, walk into some businesses and just have those conversations. I wish that I had a little bit better, like what the money's for, as opposed to just like help fund. Yeah, help set the cost of this event, basically. Um, Cheshire, when they do theirs, it's for their, they have a scholarship, not scholarship, but like a they have a grant fund that people can apply to, to do conservation projects on their land.
Mm-hmm.
Um, and that is, that's the thing I want to copy at some point. Um. Don't quite have it all figured out yet, but that'd be a nice thing to be like, you know, hey, business, would you be willing to donate? You get some free P R and it'll help do this really great thing.
Yeah, I mean, in the meantime, just somehow say that there are many costs to running our district, that our grants don't fund, that we um, use some assistance with or and like developing, like covering my time to develop a grant program.
Right.
Yeah, you know, that kind of stuff. I mean, I mean, that really is what part of the issue is, right? Is that
All the time has spoken for my grants.
Right.
Well, I, I'll talk to Gary at, at um, that way.
Really?
Slash Blue Seal if you want.
That'd be amazing. Peter, you were, um, you were volunteered by others at the last meeting who were like, what if Peter would give somebody a free forestry watch?
Yeah.
Start another joke. You don't have to.
Oh, baby. Um.
And if you think about that, we can talk more.
Yeah. I do that pretty regularly for neighbors and that sort of thing, so.
Okay.
Peter, I have a question before I forget it. Yesterday we were visiting a farm uh, like a veggie grow or whatever that has some forested land and she talked about as part of her current use forest plan, you know, they have to do maintenance or certain amount of work on their property, but she used the term something about freeing or doing something with a mast tree or uh, it sounded like is that the right term?
Yeah.
So what is that like a, a bigger tree that you're trying to, or a tree that's trying to grow that you open up the space around it so it can grow?
Yeah, a mast tree is a tree that's growing some sort of, producing some sort of fruit or nut. That the mast is the, is what it's producing. So like acorns from a, from an oak tree are mast. Oaks are mast producing. So oaks, beeches, that sort of thing are hard mast producers. So if they're releasing those trees, what they're trying to do is get them to produce more nuts or whatever it is that that those trees are growing.
I'd never heard that term before. So I was like, I sort of had a sense that it meant opening some space up around some tree for some reason, but.
It's obscure.
Okay. Um. Yeah, I'm trying to think of like something that we could donate or, I mean, we could do a tour of the course for.
Actually, I think we'll be into that.
I'll set Abby, I'll set Abby up with that one. She's great at giving tours. So is my husband. And I am once I get into it, but.
We have plenty of like books posters thing, but that's less exciting, I think, than an experience. So that can be a thing.
Yeah.
Uh, so I suppose I could do a lesson or some sort of equine experience, depending on what
I like equine experience.
Okay.
It's all iterative.
Well, so for example, for people who've really Well, so, for example, for people who've really never been near or around horses, just to sort of. Have a chance to commune with one and understand a little bit about what its body language is telling you and that kind of stuff, or it could be. I mean, it could be a pony ride for a kid, it could be a lesson, it could be a sort of meet the horses, I, I'd be open to doing something like that.
That'd be amazing.
Um, I don't, you know, equine experience will work because we can talk about what they actually wanted to.
Yeah, I like that.
Okay.
Be useful to have. Sort of a quick summary that people could provide so that, like, because we have to advertise this. On a table, like, do we need to create some cute small sign for the title and then just like a paragraph or less than a paragraph?
Yeah, what you probably want is to do it as a gift certificate. And on the envelope for the gift certificate, have just a very brief, this entitles you to kind of thing. Um, but we should have some actual objects too.
Yeah, I agree.
If it's only envelopes, it.
Yeah. Anybody wanna, I think anybody would donate maple syrup.
Could ask some of our associate supervisors, like, I don't remember if we left.
I think they're.
We use the wifi of our neighbors, I feel like we could ask.
Ask them.
Yeah, next door, never been in there, but.
Oh, basket?
Yeah.
Yeah.
That's how we're on the internet right now. Cause only government computers can connect to the government internet, so this is.
Technologies. But I mean, yeah, certainly, Bascoms seems like people, who makes cider.
Mountain Orchards. Cider around.
Gallon of cider and some donuts.
I don't know, I would guess that this is a time of year she's making donut.
You had said there was a place that you, they made stuff when you were at the plant sale, does that person still operate?
Oh, what is that called? Paradox, yeah, paradox. Do you remember though, two years, two years ago, three years ago, at the plant sale, there was a woman baking in Andrea's kitchen?
Yes.
Yeah, so she's moved off and is doing her own thing now.
That was a hard plant sale, we're all there working and she's like baking these amazing cookies.
I just kept going over there, buy another one.
Uh, they were.
And, you know, we could chat, like, whether. Like, can we have the cider and donuts actually there, give a gift certificate that they can go pick them up, that might be simpler than.
Yeah.
Somebody having to go get, like, if Andrea doesn't come.
Yeah, but if there are some things on the table, that, that draws people in, the way.
Donuts, if, you know, they could go get them fresh.
Well, the donuts should be fresh, cause they are.
Yeah.
Hmm.
Side Hill Farms Jam, wonder if they would.
I don't know, worth asking.
That's awesome, you haven't had that yet? Oh.
There's someone. In Wilmington that makes some can, I, there's a farmhouse market or whatever up there. And I got a jar of pickled beets, they are the best pickled beets I have ever had, I don't know, I don't remember who it is. Boyd Farm might do something.
Yeah.
So the place that used to be the cheese place at the retreat. Is now in a new incarnation. Might be worth talking to them about whether they would do something, whether it was some cheese, or they've got a lot of. You know, local food things, and those are always tempting.
We have an end with them, cause we've worked with them, uh, Peter, that, Peter, right, Dorn, Dorn? Shoot, um.
Benny's morning, so that means yes.
Used to be the person that we coordinated with on the boot brushes and stuff, and then he got promoted, so.
So that would be somebody else.
And that's what I'm trying to think of is, is businesses or people that.
Yeah.
We have some connection.
Yeah.
Or at least.
I think Kayla, who used to be the P A in our office, I think she's a yoga teacher now. But I wonder, Emma still talks to her, and I wonder if she would like do like a yoga class, I don't know, she's like at a studio, like, maybe can get like a studio. Pass or something like that, or a full pass, but you know, a free class or whatever.
That'd be a good hope, but.
Happy little guy.
Um. Does anyone do birdhouses? Seems like a lot of places I've been to meetings and they have things, this birdhouse usually.
Jolene's husband used to, right?
Yeah.
Yeah, he used to, I don't know if he still does.
I reached out to pressure for the myself, and she basically backed off, so we haven't had the myself.
Actually, I should look around my house, cause I, we've been given birdhouses and I've never put them up.
Well, silly you.
Um, I'm thinking of where to put them.
Well, what other company, are there other companies that we do business with that?
That we, yeah.
What was that thing you opened, did you open that thing from, you weren't sure?
Yeah, that was a reference check for us. Yeah. Questioning about where we spend our money. We can auction off some plant skin.
Oh, that's true, we have plant sale things, it's just not quite the time.
Yeah.
Some of our swag, little package of our.
What about, yeah, water bottles and.
Any of those selling?
Not really.
I didn't know if people could just buy them now, other than like.
Well, they can't at this exact moment, because the, the, so the, the new website's up and running, the old website is shut down.
Yeah.
It still exists, we're gonna use the old website to host the plant sale, because it would be easier to keep that WooCommerce. E-commerce platform in place.
Okay.
Um, so I need to attach it to a U R L, cause it's obviously you can't visit it, it doesn't happen, so I need to do that before the sale goes live in November.
Okay.
Which will take me a little bit of time.
Okay, but in the meantime, we do have. A sweatshirt, a water bottle, a.
We could do a little basket.
Didn't we, not that this is, this is sort of off topic, but didn't we talk about. Doing another purchase round, and if we were, what the board might be interested in.
Yep.
But I don't think we ever got that.
Buy more stuff to sell?
Well, we were gonna do another, yeah, so we're out of stickers, magnets, we're just about out of pens, like some things, the things we give away.
They go.
Um, we're gonna replace a lot of those, and then we'll find an opportunity for staff who wanna buy gear, because like I have. A polo and a fleece and a vest, I might buy something else, um, but we were.
That was a, that was a nice vest.
Love that vest, um, we're gonna, but I was thinking we would include the board in the next round, in case, I think we wanted to buy something.
Yeah.
Put the logo on.
Sure.
Well, we've got a little time to think about other possibilities, you don't wanna have so many things that it gets silly.
Right.
Uh, but it's nice to have a few, you know, a couple of things that people can bid on, even if they're not. Super expensive, and a couple of things that are a little higher. Just to kind of balance out what people feel they can do.
Yeah.
At least when, when I've been involved in doing these before, that seemed to work, cause it, I mean, I've been to these things where. You walked around and it was like, there's nothing here I can even afford to bother to bid on.
Right.
Because that's not in my budget.
Yeah, me too.
And tha- that doesn't feel good, so you wanna have a little bit of range there. Um.
Yeah, I think we, I am gonna move us along.
Those are good ideas, though.
Keep coming up with thoughts, you know, even like know somebody that takes or something and. Put in a couple of pies, I mean, pies can over eighteen to twenty dollars. And at that time of year, people usually are interested in them, I am not that person. I baker, I am not, um. Unless Heather, you had anything to add to the annual meeting, okay? Um, so next is our D E I self-assessment session. Are you good with that now, Heather, or?
Yeah.
Or would it be better to wait, put it off to the next item or something?
Um, so, we don't have any more self-assessments to do, um. Um, however, I don't, if you guys wanna keep this portion of the board meeting going, I have a short. Little, um, it was the Moon Festival was on the seventeenth, um, so I just had like some videos for us to learn about it. Um, that totaled in like, I think, six minutes, um, but also I know that we're running slightly, um, behind schedule, so if you wanna make up time. I'm happy to skip over and just send out the videos for you all to watch at your leisure.
It's the board's pleasure.
Six minutes, let's do it.
Yep.
Yeah.
Cause we want the two links you sent me, Heather?
Yeah, I was thinking, um, I think it's the second, if you click on the bottom link first. Like the animated, well, no, I don't know, it doesn't really matter, which one you watch first.
Is it the truth teller, oh wait, um.
There's like a cute little animated story that like tells.
Yeah, it's a literally usual commercial, hang on.
That we don't.
The Legend of Mid Autumn Festival and How to Celebrate.
Um, yeah, I think that the first.
Two minutes and forty-two seconds.
Yeah, it doesn't really matter what one we watch first, it was just one's really like cutesy, another one's a bit more informational.
I'll just share my screen, it's probably fastest one. Do I have audio, though?
There's words though.
Heather, should there be audio?
It was just. Should be.
There were ten suns in the sky and the people on earth were living in the blistering heat. To save the earth, Hoi used his bow and arrow to shoot down nine of the suns. Hoi was respected as the national hero and received an elixir of immortality as a reward for saving the people from the heat of multiple suns. However, the elixir only had enough for one person and both Chang'e and Hoi didn't want to lead each other. But one day, one of Hoi's students tried to steal the elixir. In order to protect the elixir from thieves.
Ask them.
Chang'e, the magic elixir of immortality. Then she flew to the moon and became the moon goddess, leaving her husband behind. Alone on earth, Hoi missed his wife so much that he made an offering to the moon and tried to find the shape of Chang'e on the moon. To remember Chang'e, Chinese people worshiped the moon by eating fruit and moon-shaped desserts called mooncakes. This is the legend of the origin of the Mid Autumn Festival, which is also called the Moon Festival. Nowadays, the Mid Autumn Festival, which is also a harvest festival, has become a family holiday like Thanksgiving. Chinese people celebrate the Mid Autumn Festival by having a large dinner with family, worshiping the moon with gifts, traveling. Viewing lantern shows, eating various desserts, and flying lanterns to pray for their happiness and the happiness of their families. Search China Highlights Mid Autumn Festival to get more information.
So that was the cutesy legend one, and then the next video is like, how it's celebrated nowadays.
Right, the Allstate commercial took over.
So, what were you saying, Heather?
Um, just, that was like the cutesy legend version, and then the next video is like how the traditions of like, the actual celebration.
Was that the second link or the first link I clicked on before?
He said, if you said the name again, I think I remember, what did the link say?
What is the Chinese Mid Autumn Festival? Yeah, this is different.
Structure.
It is the one night of the year when the moon is at its fullest and brightest. That's when people across China and the Chinese diaspora celebrate the Mid Autumn Festival. It is also known as the Moon Festival, and in twenty twenty-four, it happens on September seventeen. For thousands of years, the Mid Autumn Festival is a time when people of Chinese heritage gather for family reunions. Extend a family style on auspicious foods such as pomelo, taro, water cowtrops, onion, and lotus root. Pumpkin, chestnuts, duck and crab are also traditionally on the menu. The most quintessential staple is mooncakes, in Hong Kong, the pastries are filled with sweet lemon seed paste and a soft duck egg yolk. But each region of China consists of a variation of the traditional snack, and there are countless varieties. Mooncakes often come in elegant packaging that people give as gifts. As night falls on September seventeen, families celebrate over and new and later admire the moon. Many Chinese cities hold lantern carnivals in parks and housing estates, and colored lanterns light up neighborhoods. Some regions held lion or dragon dances, as well as music and other cultural performances. Fireworks often light up the night too. A tradition unique to Hong Kong is the fire dragon dance. A Thai fire dragon dance is inscribed on China's national list of intangible cultural heritage. The tradition goes back to eighteen eighty, when residents of this Hong Kong neighborhood began holding the parade. Legend has it that Thai and suffered a plague, that was dispelled only after villagers managed to drag it. Covered it with lit justice and paraded it around the village. The origins of the Mid Autumn Festival date back to ancient moon worship, legends of celestial maidens and immortals. And then skipping for the autumn harvest. Many cultures celebrate harvest, but fear festival comes with such a collection of tales as the Chinese Mid Autumn Festival. The most well-known is the legend of Chang'e, the moon goddess who drank the elixir of immortality and floated up into the sky. It is said that if you look closely at the full moon, you can still see a goddess's image on it. You can find out about other traditional Chinese festivals on S C M K dot co.
mentioning, were at my house on Tuesday night and as they were leaving, they grow. The moon, but certainly.
Yeah, um, and I, like, I've, I've heard bits and pieces, like of the legend, especially like there's a movie, I've read a book. Where that was like, you know, the center theme, um, but my neighbor is the one who, um, she really wanted to celebrate, I think she has celebrated a lot in the past. Um, she got us a mooncake and wanted to make a whole, whole day of it, um, so it was just nice for me to learn more, I didn't realize it was. Um, a holiday that was really centered around gathering together as family and friends, um, so that was something fun that I learned. Um, and I also, you know, love a theme, and so all the foods are around, um, which is fun. And I also didn't know, um, the mooncake that we got was savory, um, my mind instantly goes to sweets. But again, I think this is another, uh, that's just the American in me thinks that everything with cake needs to be sweet. Um, I don't know if any of you all have had experience with moon festivals or. Thoughts on it, and you can just leave it at watching the videos, that's fine, or, um, or not.
The, the closest I've, and it wasn't a full moon, but there was one morning on our farm that. When I got out into the barnyard, the moon was just setting and the sun was coming up, and I kind of stood there with my arms out. To try to have the energy of both of them go through me, and I did have a very good day that day, but it was just. You know, that's one cool thing about how our farm is oriented, is that we often have the moon just setting. Or the moon coming up as the sun is setting, and it just, yeah, it's. I don't know.
Yeah.
I get a lot of good energy from nature.
I, when I lived in DC, this was a very large festival and very big deal, um, so I've been to the Moon Festival. Just once, cause COVID hit, and I was there, um, and so the one in Chinatown in DC is huge, there's lots of parades and. Um, people selling all kinds of things, the moon-shaped things that I also like, Heather was like, this has to be sweet, and it was not, they're savory. Um, but it was just a really great experience, but those were held in the day, so. And it was not there savory. Um, but it was just a really great experience, but those were held in the day, so they we didn't get to see like the, sort of the appreciation of the moon or I didn't see any of the, um, like lanterns there, but I've been to other lantern festivals. I just don't think they were centered around this specific holiday.
Thanks Heather, that was a nice little change of pace. I enjoyed that.
Yeah, thank you all for rolling with it.
Absolutely. Um, if we're all set with the I, next is our district manager's report.
I could almost feel some little white.
Especially reading the district manager's report, it made me tired. Oh my God, you people do so much. It's amazing.
How much enthusiasm is there for storm drains?
You know, it's actually funny. We were always talking about it in the regional coordination meeting, um, today. It was a great experience to sit, sit in a spot and watch people experience the thing themselves. So there were like multiple kids that go there and have a ritual. So one group, they try to jump over like one edge of the picture and make it to the other side without touching it. Another girl was so adorable. She puts her parents' assigns her parents' locations to stand and she runs in between them in circles. And she's like, the parents were like, yeah, she just does ever since this was here. This is now what she does. So like, it was cool to see people interacting with it. Um, kids really love it. And people, a lot of people I talked to were mostly out of town. Um, so that was sort of harder to be like, yeah, you should adopt a drain wherever you live, which I still did because I think it's still important. The awareness is more to me important than people signing up for this app. But it was interesting to see that. Um, but people were, it was also another golly walk where we got to, got to talk to people about other issues and conservation. But enthusiasm, so much. People did say they want more of the arts everywhere rather like they would love for us to do more of that, but it's not quite in our in our ability right now.
Actually, that sounds like you got a fair amount of really positive feedback. So, yeah, that's great.
Is there anything added that lets people know that we were part of it being there?
There are these QR codes on there and then I have a paper, um, basically like a small packet, it's like two pages. One page is how to sign up for the program and the other is a simple, how do you clean a storm drain? Why would you clean a storm drain? That thing. Um, and that is something that we could potentially, you know, if the businesses were okay with it, post it at the businesses around the Harmony Lot. And sort of bring awareness to that, especially because the goal or right now it's only Brattleboro because of finding the locations of storm drains is just a little complicated. Um.
Well, and that one, you know, at least, it's not like at the side of the road where for people to be able to stop and see if they might get run over. I mean, you've been in a parking lot, but.
But they're next to a fire lane, so there isn't even, I don't even think K D cap parking is there. So like, hopefully no one's ever parking near there. Every time I go there, there are cars there parked, so. Just proud of her.
That sounds great. I mean, honestly, I was afraid you were gonna say, yeah, people kind of walk by and go, uh huh, that's nice. But it sounds like there's a lot more actual engagement.
Drew adopted his storm drain. He was very excited when I told him about it, so.
Drew would.
Where is his? Um, in Crosby or I always forget, there is a something that intersects Crosby and it's starts with an A, I think. Um, but basically near where he lives, there's a drain that goes straight to the west zone. It's like a, just a drop. And that was another thing, just telling people that what goes down there is going straight to the water. People just did not see that before. You could tell it was a learning.
I'm not even sure I knew that. I think people assume there's treatment and there rarely is here.
And I think that's also a good spot because you can, you know where the river is. If you are in Brattleboro, just even a little bit, it's pretty easy to tell the river's right there, the storm drain's there. It's just a straight line. So like, that was a great thing for people.
That's allowed? I mean, that seems a little nuts.
Can you imagine the system it would take to capture the material from every one of those drains and process it?
But isn't that what most towns do?
That's what real, that's what large cities are required to do because the, the scale of it. But it's really expensive.
Yeah, crazy expensive.
If a farmer did that, they'd be out of business.
Yep, and there's, when we talk about the TMDL that's coming for nitrogen, uh, farmers are once again, and it almost certainly be the ones that are forced to bear the brunt of the reduction and they're not the largest contributor. But the largest contributor in this basin is, is Septic Systems and that's a challenging thing to address.
So I can't, sorry, online people, I can't show you. Um, these don't are all storm drains just in Brattleboro.
Oh my goodness, I didn't know.
And Drew had to add his own, so this isn't even all of them.
It looks like some parts of Brattleboro should just fall into the earth. Just storm drains.
So, yeah, and obviously the markless are by certain areas, but like Drew lives somewhere over here and there's a storm drain here. Um, but you can see how difficult something like Corey's saying, how hard that would be to change this. Um, so if we can get people energized, it would be great. Um, so hosting more events like that will be good.
So when he adopts, I'm sorry, I don't know more about this program, I should.
Going on for a little bit too long, so yeah.
But, um, like, does Drew keep it clean or?
So the goal is.
Does he paint it or, I mean?
That would be great. Um, you need all these permissions to paint them. That's why this project took a long time. Um, but basically the goal is to have people.
I know this is open, I don't mind. I'm gonna say this anyway. You can let all this stuff go in the river, but you gotta get permission to paint around the storm drain.
That is correct. It is an installation.
Sorry.
Of art.
Any government people that are listening that, but that just seems nuts.
Um, but the goal like for the project is you would adopt, pick a drain that's near your house or something, somewhere you walk or something like that, and you would clear it ideally as monthly, but most likely it would be before, you know, there's a heavy rain event. That way you know that the rain isn't every, it's not clogged and water can flow through. Um, so usually they say you take a rake and sort of break out sediment or leaves or anything that are blocking the area. And also just knowing like maybe it's in, it needs to be repaired and then you could report that information and that would help. Because of all those drains, I don't think town proud of us time to just drag around and see what needs work.
Be somewhat self-serving to a landowner near the storm drain because perhaps their street, I mean, in a severe whatever wouldn't flood as much or their lawn might not get washed.
Or their driveway, maybe against, we're by the floodwater. So it's, it's very useful for lots of.
Okay, thank you. Any other questions? These, um, numbers, like, yeah, the financials are something, we had seventeen thousand, we've got eighty thousand more this year.
Yeah.
I mean, I know that number can be somewhat fluid or.
God, correct, yeah. No, we're, um, it's helped, more funders are paying us upfront than used to, which is a big difference. And also just, I'm getting better at knowing that I need to invoice constantly because the turnaround time. In the past, I'd be like, oh yeah, I'm not funding the bank, so I can focus on other work right now and catch up on invoices later and then be oh, the money's dwindling and now it's gonna take two months of waiting for funders to actually pay us.
Right.
And to get to one of these birds burning on the farm, you dance.
Well, this one, this one was fun.
Yeah, you can see a lot of birds, but it was a nice walk.
I had a woodpecker in my calf barn one morning last.
Yeah.
Tapping on the pipes.
Oh, they love the noise.
And it wasn't, you know, I, it wasn't a big one, but it was gray, black, little red on it.
Oh, probably a red belly.
It was on, the red was on top, I think. Maybe not.
Well, a red belly would have a little red here, but it would have a sort of a red mohawk.
That might have been it.
And it's more grayish rather than the caries which are black and white and look like dachshunds or more.
I'd had my camera to take a picture. Um, but yeah, my grandson actually was in there with me for some reason, just, what, what am I here?
He liked the noise.
Um, I did not.
I don't either.
Heather, how about the, uh, decolonizing your garden thing? How did that go? Or have we lost Heather?
Um, she's lost.
I'm here. Um, it went well. Unfortunately, we only had one member of the public attend. We had eight signed up. Um, only one came. However, Garrett was there and Emma Keister was there and, um, Sarah did a really incredible job. She, they put on a ton of effort into setting up posters throughout their space. Um, it was clearly, maybe it was their first time leading from like this. It did not feel like it though. Um, it invoked a lot of awesome discussions. Um, and yeah, it was really incredible. And I was thinking, you know, if, if we ever wanted, like the board ever wanted to have um, Sarah and come in and lead, like this would have to be like a day or in lieu of a board meeting or something like that, you know? But like lead us through a, a DEI session or something, they would be really fantastic at it. Um, so I think it was a good experience, but I don't know if Garrett, you want, you have any thoughts to add?
Um, I was just gonna say it was, um, probably, it was really, really thought provoking, emotionally in touch. Um, really, you felt really grounded. Um, not certainly when I think of like a farm visit, what you'd expect, but, uh, a really fantastic perspective. Um, and what they, what they showed and what they put on was, I thought, um, really valuable. So, you know, as Heather said, it was, it was really incredible, not at all as expecting, but I was really pleasantly surprised and I enjoyed it.
That was one I really wanted to get to and I just couldn't and I was kind of, and I'm kicking myself even more now because it sounds like you could have used a few more people as well.
Yeah, but that's okay. Hopefully we can do something similar. And I also, I really want to give kudos to Garrett. That was his like second day on the job and it was, uh, like you said, emotionally intense. Um, and just a lot, but he did fantastic. So thank you again, Garrett.
So maybe this is something that we need to think about finding a different audience for.
I don't know. I don't know.
Cause it sounds like it was great.
Yeah, um, I don't know. I had one, one, one person who signed up and didn't come is a producer friend of mine and they had a kid and like, sorry, you know, like just didn't work out that day. The six others, I don't know. I don't know.
Well, yeah. Well, thank you. I'm sorry, even more sorry I missed it.
It's okay.
I was just trying to think of how we could use it or, yeah. Um, anything else besides like Peter said, kudos or whatever for all that this entails and all that you're all doing.
Oh, I can give a somewhat positive invasive plant update. We have been able to finally survey the entirety of the Hinsdale site. I was not certain we were gonna make it with our uh, limited staff and volunteer numbers. Um, we didn't pull every plant, but at least we know where they are and that'll be helpful for the future.
This is still grass?
Water chestnut.
In my head, I said that aloud.
I'm sorry, I didn't have time, have not, right.
The news on the silver grass front is less positive. People keep finding it. Just find a way for them to stop.
Yeah, it's around.
It's spreading.
But at least now the funding has been ironed out, so it'll be smoother sailing moving on.
And do you have more water chestnut tips this fall or?
Two more. Um, I don't yet know. I will need kayaks for those, but the twenty-seventh and twenty-eighth. So not this weekend, but next weekend. We will see where, where we get. Um, and the site, it's sort of difficult to say how much further we can go and a lot of seeds have already dropped. So that means we're just sort of removing biomass, which is still useful, but like in terms of timing. Still grass is also at the edge. It's just like, of course, all at the same time. And there's grant writing. Uh, you know, there's a lot.
So many hours in the day. Okay, secretaries report. We have minutes from three meetings or?
Just two.
And Katie has the others. The August twenty-second?
Oh, we have August twenty-two and we have June five. Don't have July.
The she has notes or is going to be able to be getting those or do we?
Yeah, she said she was gonna try to get them to me tonight, but something came up.
And from a accounting perspective, do I need to write out in lines like this for each? Months or should it, could it be motion for minutes from and then the three?
Uh, I think we can do the two meetings that we have minutes for as one motion unless there was some reason to pull them apart. But I don't know why.
I'd say that in the right way. So, all right.
Let me sorry, June and August.
Like to make a motion, um, and I can figure out whether there are any corrections or additions.
I would like to know that we approve the minutes from June fifth and August twenty-second.
Second.
Did anyone have any additions or corrections to those?
I did not.
I did not have, no, they look good.
Good. Hey, all those in favor?
Hi.
That was cutesy. Um. Reboot, yeah. Review upcoming supervisor meeting dates. Next meeting, my parents' anniversary, October ninth, twenty twenty-four.
Does that day work for everybody?
Seems like that's.
Yep.
Well, cause this meeting was late. Supposed to be second Monday, right?
Yes.
Yeah, that works for me.
I'm still a little slow with this. They've seen me evolve into actually having one of things.
Well, it just makes it more complicated every time, so never gets easier.
Well, somebody keeps putting other apps on here. And it's not, I swear, it's not always me. It's like.
You let the grandkids play with it?
No. But my grandson was trying to get on my computer and he said, Mama, what's your password? And I gave it to him and he said, it's not working. I gave it to him again and I said, you must be typing wrong. Then I realized I have different ones from the phone than my computer and I was giving my phone one, so it was not working. He was right. October ninth, Abby is gone to V L T board meeting. I don't know. It, it, that, her being gone doesn't usually affect.
It's the tree show.
Let's say about Dave. Oh, oh.
It's on here already, so I'm, I'm good.
Okay.
And we can. Oh, Katie and Jeffrey.
Yeah, I can check with them.
I can't remember what he said about his theater and rehearsal schedule, whether Wednesdays were gonna be an issue to him ongoing. He thought he could make tonight.
I thought he just had one more. There's a, tonight and then I think Friday or something.
Yeah, unless they're into another.
Yeah, he, he may be into another.
Sure, yeah.
I don't know, he's.
Yeah.
Okay, we'll give it a whirl.
Wonder if he'd be willing to auction off a, uh, personal performance.
Or tickets.
Yeah.
Maybe he could.
Tickets or something.
See if.
They would donate a pair of tickets or something, that's for trying.
Should I put this location or go by location?
Yeah, I'll go to location, yeah, because I'll have to check with Jeff.
Yeah, and by then I may have my dining. Yeah, and by then I may have my dining room back, but I don't know for sure.
So. Did it go, no, I know, I know what you were saying early about your house is in disarray.
It, it's.
Mine isn't, I don't have an excuse.
No, the dining room is now, has returned to its extra task as a closet, as they're getting ready to move and to stop. You can't really go in there.
Okay, we've had an executive session for personnel matters, was that to do with, or that something else, okay? So just under other business, just yesterday I was in, well, went to Colchester and. Was on a tour that the. NRCS, VACD and somebody else organized for the, I don't know how many, if anyone's heard of the Vermont. Ag Water Quality Partnership thingy, anyway, it was all those people, so. You know, couple federal agencies, like FSA and NRCS were there. As I mentioned, pretty much every state agency had representatives, Sanders, Ballant. And Welch all had staff members there. Yeah, lot of people, um, to go around, we toured three different farms that I was pleasant. This was in, based in Franklin County, um, Lauren Weston's district. And I was pleasantly surprised because, you know, Franklin County is pretty heavy in dairy, so I figured we were going to be seeing mega dairies and. Whatever else and all the wonderful things they do, which they do. But it was actually Peter Rainville's farm was the only dairy farm we went to and he basically runs the farm himself. Um, he has a robotic milker, milks eighty cows and it was pretty neat to hear, cause again, he's in big dairy. Country to some extent and he was saying, you know, he's had people put pre- not pressure on him, but like ask him why he hasn't. Gotten bigger, why he doesn't get big, cause he could do more, he could hire people and he said, that's not how I wanna farm. So he's staying with the eighty cows and, um, he has solar. And so a lot of this was, you know, kind of demonstrating, these three farms were demonstrating the different partners that have been part of helping these farmers in different ways. So he has a, the robotic kind of little brush that sweeps the feed up to the cows. That I guess he got grant funded, I can't remember which agency or whoever. Helped with funding for that solar he was talking about, I think, caring dairy came into some aspect, which is Ben and Jerry's. Funding, um, so that was nice to see, we went to Bone. Boneyard Farm, she's with her husband, um diversified veggies, some meat and stuff. And she's the one that mentioned the timber stand improvement or whatever they have to do to be current use and whatever and. Freeing the mastery and stuff and very, very passionate about working there and why she wants to be there, it was really. Inspiring to hear her talk young, you know, thirties, forties, young kids. And she was. It wasn't all just like roses, you know, like everything's great, you guys are all wonderful, she like had some. Helpful to NRCS like critique about like, um, she did a conservation plan or whatever. She did, but part of what the grant called for was to do the work that she wanted to do, but also she had to have. She did some IMP work and to connect it to that was having weather station installed, or I think that's what she called it. And her kind of critique to NRCS was you guys helped fund this weather station and I have it here. But there's no education, no follow up on how I'm supposed to use it and, you know, check back as to whether it's being helpful to me. And that kind, so she was well spoken in, you know, presenting yay, yay kind of things, this is great, but also. This is something I think you can improve on and both she, I think, and Peter Rainville mentioned, you know, the thoughts of. The complexity of, yeah, you guys have all this money, but we're single people trying to run farms. We don't have time, at the time of year, you have your deadlines and stuff to be sitting down and she mentioned. Um, sounds like Franklin County has a, a heather, you know, that works with her and does help her with that kind of stuff, so. It was a pretty cool tour.
Sounds great.
And one thing I heard that. Is a little disturbing, um, I guess there. In sometime in the last two or three years, the Vermont or the Conservation Law Foundation did another suit or something and. It sounds like coming out of that EPA is saying that now the Department of Environmental Conservation will be.
Will take over CFO.
Taking over the certification or whatever in the. Whatever that process is called for CFOs and I don't know if it's large farms too, or I, I don't know, but it just sounded like it's. There's the feeling out there that all the work that is being done has not been enough and that the agency of Ag has not been. Staying on top of things or, I, um, don't quote me on this, please, if there's any reporters on this open meeting, um, but just. I didn't, you know, and I know there's been that thought before, I've heard a supervisor on a conservation board say that there's no way that the Department of Ag. Should be overseeing what farmers do because of course they're going to want their farmers to pass inspections and stuff. And I said, actually, no, they want their farmers to be doing what they're supposed to because Vermont's all about promoting. Our wonderful dairy state or farm state or whatever, and if people come and they're getting lousy food or they're getting, you know, seeing dirty farms, then. That's not, but anyway, it's getting a little bit into politics, I'm not going there, but it, it was pretty cool and. To see the different people there and, and talking about, um. All that we can do together and there was one, a woman there from RD Rural Development. That was talking about, they have, she was getting a little almost indignant, I'd say, or whatever, that people were not realizing that they have this funding. But like gap funding, she said, to cover, like if a farmer is getting cost share and they don't have the wherewith. And again, don't quote me that they cover that gap between cost share and the total cost, but some kind of gap funding. For some programs, so you, you know, you guys.
We live right next to them.
Yeah. Losh at with them about that and, but she, it was on the last farm, which was like a strawberry and vegetable or whatever farm. In the flood plain of the Lemoyle and we got to see where they had had like crater holes almost of damage from the flooding and that. Talked about how they pulled, but that's when she was like, we have money to help with whatever, you know, whatever gap they were talking about, so. Um, I, that's one of the key things I wanted to mention that, um, whether you were aware of that or.
I don't know a ton about rural development.
But yeah, and it, I don't either, um, you know, it's, I, I've known they're in this office, but in terms of just what they do, so it might be something to check in.
I know Treasure Conservation District, uh, that's made it to the ones, that's like her largest grant she gets every year, they don't have all the state grants we do over in New Hampshire. And so, I know she's like, oh yeah, this RD grant's great, I get like fifty grand a year and they do, they do business planning assistance. But that particular one, and there's so many other groups that do that, you're in Vermont, I haven't gone after it, but, but yeah, I'm sure RD must have lots of other money. It's like all the other five agencies right now.
And look, I feel like whatever most is like loans that help with things like that, but they, I wouldn't be surprised if they have more stuff. Um, but we do have a meeting tomorrow, or the office, that could be something we touch on.
Okay, and I can't.
Yeah, Alex was back today.
Right.
Lady's name, I should, we all had name tags. I put mine on and I'm like, I saw treasure on it, I'm not, I'm not treasure of VACD and then I said, oh no, it says I'm president of VACD. And then it said treasure, CRWFA and I'm like, oh, right, cause there were people there from. I, I guess I was the representative from the Connecticut one, I didn't know I was going there as that, but, um, and the other two watershed alliances had people. I either have a bug, sorry.
I think it looked like something flying around.
And Linda's bringing all her.
I actually had some eye trouble last year where I had things floating and I'm like, no, don't tell me that's bad, okay, I just wanted to mention that. Cause I know I go to a lot of these things and I don't always do a good job of reporting back. And it started at eight o'clock in the morning, we were supposed to start the bus, get on the bus at eight o'clock, so that's why I was. For driving to Colchester yesterday. Um, did anyone else have other?
I don't think so.
Are we gonna get done early? Oh, right. Don't worry, Linda. Heather had a shorter session, helped to get us back on. Do you think there was something in the upcoming, did I say something in my email to you about something in the upcoming? Things that we want, oh, the strategic planning, but then you explained that.
Yeah.
That's something we do need to do sooner than later.
We probably can't wait until that process plays out, yeah.
I, I just emailed Cory about this strategic plan concept that, you know, VACD has hired consultants to try to help them. Re-vision themselves, I'll just put it simply like that, and so I was kind of like, wondering if it would be beneficial to wait. To do our strategic plan till we know what our. Not parent, but our state association kind of.
Well, therein lies the challenge, is that process isn't gonna tell NRCC anything. They need to go through their own strategic planning, that's our real parent agency, right?
Right.
So.
Yep.
It's gonna be an interesting process, I fear that it's not gonna get where everyone wants it to go, because that piece of the puzzle has to get sorted out too.
Well, I'm, I'm hoping that maybe if we can at least clarify what the districts are looking for from their state association. And can help inform exactly what our executive director should be doing, not all the stuff that Jill's been covering. To.
Right.
Keep NRCC going.
Right.
But then that will help. Us maybe have more information to go to the legislature and say, this is why we need a funded administrator, for instance, for council and.
And they need a staff.
Right, you know, this should not be coming out of VACD or through VAC, it's just another one of those ridiculous. Roundabout funding things.
Created a conflict of interest.
Right, yeah, you know, where council can't hire their own employees, cause their state agency. And the state at the time wasn't able to hire, yeah, anyway, but I'm hoping. But again, a lot of different people are hoping for different things, I think, from this consultant.
That's a whole nother. The tension.
Anything else? Okay, um, if not, we could have a motion to go into executive session. For Personnel Matters.
So moved.
So moved.
At eight twenty seven. All those in favor?
Aye.
So then we will ask the staff. Okay, um, so motion.
Yes, I would like to move that we approve Cory's uh actions in regard to. The um seasonal employee.
Any further discussion or any discussion on this motion? If not, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Okay, anything else to come before us tonight?
Do you wanna take an action on the overtime, I mean, the salary?
Yes, sorry. Well.
Need a motion.
Yeah, I'll move that we, uh, the board approve the switch of Heather from an hourly to a salaried employee.
Second.
Any further discussion or discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Thank you. Something keep me on track. Okay, if there's nothing else, we could have a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Second, we're getting good at that.
I don't remember what meeting I was at recently, but I called for a motion and it was just like silent and I'm like, just somebody make the motion. And then they did, okay. Journing.
All right.
Thank you, Peter.